James, do you have what you need? Okay, I see that we have all committee members present and we are live on YouTube as well as being recorded for M H T V. And I will call us to order at six oh one P M. First up is public comment. If everyone who wants to make public comment could please use the raise their hand function so that I know who wants to speak. And when I call on you, please state your name and address for the record. Meredith Tedford.
Hey, Meredith Tedford, forty Locust Street. First of all, I can appreciate that probably me speaking is the last thing that some of you may want to hear because I know when I was in the position of chairing meetings and former school committee members would step up to speak, it was always, it was always kind of a challenge because obviously new year, new situation. And I really do appreciate that, that every year and every new sort of committee iteration brings its own challenges. And, and I appreciate this. So I thank you in advance for hearing me out. I was, I, you know, continue to pay attention just personally because I care about the committee and the town, and I care about our students and staff and faculty. And I, I just felt really compelled to, to comment on the contract that's being voted on tonight, which I saw posted. Thank you for posting that. There's two, two things that I would like to bring up. The first is personal a little bit, and the second is really professional and business related. From a personal perspective, I just remember sort of going through contract negotiations with our prior superintendent. And I really, based on that knowledge and that information and the input that we got from legal counsel and M A S C, it's virtually unheard of to kind of give a five-year contract to a new superintendent. So I, I really encourage you to kind of think about, think about that. I think it's even more unheard of after a year where we don't really have data about performance in relation to a normal functioning school year. And, and that's no slight on Dr. Bucky. It's really, there's just, there's not data and a five-year contract at this point gives absolutely no leverage to the district in terms of future and budgeting and whatnot. So I think that that's something that really needs to be kind of vetted with the community. I also think that, you know, there's some real challenges related to, you know, again, sort of personal relationships and conflict of interest law. And the law is really written broadly to cover sort of even the appearance of impropriety. And because it's so unusual to, to offer a five-year contract after a year, and there's already been apologies made for sort of, you know, overstepping personal bounds with the superintendent, I think the committee really needs to justify that, that this decision, you know, not based on your personal relationship, but based on student achievement, which is really what the obligation of the committee is all about, is being able to justify superintendent's performance based on super, based on student achievement. So I really hope that you can kind of answer in your discussion today how Dr. Bucky's performance in relation to that student achievement with only one year in the district in a very unusual year justifies that kind of contract renewal. And how does that, a five, five years now benefit the district moving forward? And then, you know, the other piece of this in terms of the personal relationship is something I also would like committee members to consider. In the six years that I spent on that board, I never once met with the superintendent outside of Widger Road, not once. We'd ever had a cup of coffee. We never went to lunch. We never went to dinner together, nothing. All of our, and, and I, that was intentional. And it was because we were very conscientious of having a professional relationship and not a personal relationship. And I think all of you, or many of you that I worked with were even critical of that and the amount of time that I did spend at Widger Road. So I just want you to think about that also in relation to, you know, being able to, to separate and really make the community feel comfortable with the fact that a personal relationship isn't impacting a professional one. Thanks.
Thank you, Meredith. Catherine Martin, you're next.
Twenty-nine West Shore Drive. And actually, Meredith summed everything up really nicely that I had to say. A couple additions. I'm kind of, I guess tired also of feeling like the lack of transparency, having this meeting with such the July week block instead of the typical seven o'clock time. And then everything she said, we're coming off of an atypical year with our superintendent and we, the data to be able to, oh, you know, what look like in the future. And it may be great. And this isn't good or bad. It's about being financial stewards of the forty-two do oversee act right now, just seems fiscally irresponsible. And I couldn't agree more with the conflict of interest and some of the, the friendships that we have all been witnessing all around town. And it's just not appropriate. I work in the municipal sector and I don't have any private access with any of my clients because it's inappropriate. And we're seeing this over and over again with this committee. And now we're seeing a five-year deal. You know, we're talking hours here in a district that struggles to keep the lights on. So I think we really all need to, to look hard at this and really think, is this appropriate? Is this the right time? Are we being stewards of this budget of, of this district? Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Dan Albert, you're up next.
Hi, Sarah. Hi, committee. Thank you for letting me talk to you about this issue. As I said, I am, I'm here to urge you to vote no on any sort of contract extension tonight. I make this plea for a few reasons. First of all, the methodology is for evaluation is not sufficient for making this kind of decision. A superintendent who earns himself a grade of proficient from the school committee does not warrant special treatment. Let's say that for somebody that scores excellent. And as you note in your first sentence of commentary, this superintendent has spent the past year in quote, uncharted territory. And I want to quickly kind of unpack, if I could, each of those. And let me make clear that I am pleading with you, urging you not to take this vote independent of my own views of Dr. Bucky, Mr. Bucky, and the school committee. I think everybody on the school committee has heard from me plenty when I'm happy and when I'm not. But that's not why I'm speaking to you today. So let me speak about the methodology. So I've read the underlying law, the D E S I guidance, and then you've used the D E S I evaluation, summative evaluation form. This was posted, and I'm only going on what I've been able to see posted as an end of cycle summit of evaluation. It lists, and I don't know if this is a typo or what, but it lists June third to June, twenty twenty-one to June first, twenty twenty-one. I'm not sure how long this cycle is. I don't know if he negotiated coming in a particular cycles cadence or what, but if this is a one-year evaluation, I, I would understand it if you need at least a two-year cycle. Secondly, speaking about kind of who Marblehead deserves as a superintendent, as you noted in the evaluation, his scores are, and I should say the scores for this superintendent, for a superintendent, were making progress towards goals, not met goals, and also proficient. So what I want as a parent, what I think Marblehead is able to get because of the kind of community we have is a superintendent who scores excellent. Okay. You know, it's sort of like, okay, we gave the guy a B. That's fine. But what, why would you then give somebody with a C or a B special treatment of an extended contract? And I, and I want to quickly say, I call this special treatment because I've been through several superintendents, and I've never seen this before. Last one, uncharted territory. So you refer to uncharted territory. And I know others have made this same content, a comment. You, you might think that, or the, the logic might be, okay, so he's done great with this incredibly difficult problem. Therefore, when the problem's much smaller and normal, obviously he'd do even better. I think the opposite is true. And I think it's true for two reasons. One is the ability to operate in a crisis is not the same as the ability to operate in a sort of a normal session. More importantly, though, this school committee has, how any school committee in this past year, but this school committee has had to deal with uncharted territory, which means your ability, our ability to assess a superintendent or anybody on any kind of normal scale is, is kind of blown. Okay. So again, it's, it's not true that if you do a great job in an extraordinary year, you'll do an even better job in an ordinary year. But more importantly, we as a community, and I think you as a school committee, have also been through an extraordinary year, and you're making decisions based on that. So I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to talk today. Appreciate you taking feedback from everybody. I appreciate everything the school committee has done. And when I haven't, I'd love to let you know. But I really do urge you to vote no on any sort of contract extension, certainly tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Kim Day, you're next.
Hi there. Kim Day, eighteen Liberty Road. I wanted to thank all of you for posting the information, the materials packet prior to the meeting so that the public had the opportunity to review it and to weigh in this evening in public comment or in their emails to you. I know I sent an email that I've heard from a few of you that you've seen, and thank you for your response. I guess I might, I don't want to repeat too much of what the others have said, but I, I tend to agree. And listen, Dr. Bucky, this has nothing to do with me saying that I object to your experience and like what you have done for the district over this past year. And it was an incredibly challenging year. Honestly, I think that you're off to a great start in this district. And I have a feeling that there are people that are listening that may be afraid to make public comment because you are listening. So this, this is not personal about you. I just want to make sure that that's clear. I think that I struggle with the idea of extending the contract by an additional two years at this point is because, as others have said, and I said in my email, we haven't seen Dr. Bucky, his performance in a typical school year. And so I guess I'm just really encouraging the committee to consider revisiting this at the end of next year, after we have a typical school year under our belt. And additionally, since I've been involved in the district for a while and paying attention and an involved parent, I still have the history and the memory of what happened with the last superintendent. And when we had an extended contract that we had a difficult time getting out of. I'm not to say that that will be the necessarily the experience with Dr. Bucky. And I certainly hope that he is here for several years and he continues to grow in the, in the role and be successful here. But we don't have a crystal ball, right? And so why lock Marblehead into a contract that we don't have to right now? So that's it. I'll keep it short. And thank you for taking public comment. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Kim. Scott Solberg, you're up next.
Thank you, Scott Solberg, one Ramsey Road. So a couple of issues. I actually wrote this out before, so I know I'm going to be hitting on some of the comments we've had, but actually it's not in, in direct response. Ben, as, as some of you know, I'm in the education profession, so I do a lot around leadership, working with superintendents and state leaders. The number one issue that's been going on in meetings we've been having in Marblehead, whether it's the plan for success or other areas, the biggest issue that keeps coming up is we do, we have not had stability in leadership. It's the number one issue. We need to be able to count on our leadership. Our teachers need to count on, if we're putting in new programs in place, these programs are going to continue, and it's not going to be bringing in a new leader to set up new programs. They need that, and they're asking for that. And it really begins with us as a community. We have to be focused not so much on saying, are we doing a good job? What's not going on? Which dollars in the budget are working? How can we as a community support our superintendent? We can offer constructive ideas to improve the schools, but how can we work as a community to help support the superintendent, just as the school committee's role is to support the superintendent? But here's some, here's some things. I disagree with the idea that we just simply need to get a new superintendent if this one doesn't work out. Our national reputation, I've heard from more than one superintendent at meetings I've been to, they know all about Marblehead. When I bring up my mom from Marblehead, they go, oh, my gosh, absolutely. Because the Bruce, the Bruce Moss debacle, we've had the issue recently that we have a reputation of basically doing this, of doing exactly this, not good enough, never good enough. We really want to see more. And it ends up turning over our leadership, and we're not able to get that piece. As far as the actual data that's going on here, one of the data pieces I have, I fear for, one of them is transparency and collaboration. For the first time, we have, even despite COVID, we have budget information. We are getting it regularly. It's transparent. We're getting weekly updates on what, what the district is doing to manage through COVID, the issues coming up, how we're managing through. We had weekly reopening committee meetings that included parents. Parents' voices were right there to express the concerns that we all had and were pushing to get the reopening. And our superintendent moved to reopen the schools before the state and the C D C was willing to do so because he looked at data and said, we're not going to listen anymore. Let's start moving. Now, you can't take a whole district and simply snap your fingers and schools reopening. They put together a whole program to get the, get the, it was huge, the amount of effort that went into getting this done. So I hear what you're saying that maybe under crisis, things can rise to it. But what about during, but I just want to say, this was a major effort and courage to make, to do what was right with the parent impact. At the very end of the year, we had a parent survey. Well, that came because a parent was on one of those committees making the case and would not let it go, thankfully, until everyone said, you're right, we need to get more voice and more ideas of what's going on. Responsive, transparent, collaborative. Leadership means enabling this district and our school leaders to lead. So Nan gave a report recently about something that has not happened in the 10 years I've been here, an actual horizontal as well as vertical alignment of our curriculum during COVID. You want to have better student outcomes. It starts with curriculum redesign, and it happened during the COVID crisis. That's amazing. Honestly, that is huge. It's something we've been asking for. Our previous superintendent was originally hired by Bruce Moss to do that alignment that never happened. We've been wanting it for years. It's finally happening. Very exciting. Eric Oxford redesigned our student services to establish not only more inclusive services and support, but this innovation is going to bring national attention to our district. We've already had conversations with one of the national leaders in disability who's saying, oh, my God, you need to get some people from around the state who are doing national research on the topic to come into Marblehead to watch what you're doing because this is the model that everyone's going to want to be replicating. This happened during COVID. This is going to improve the outcomes for our students with disabilities. Again, amazing. The plan for success efforts is going to help our committee, our whole community rally around the budget increase that we want. But it's going to be tied to clear objectives and a strategy that's going to improve the schools. Again, during the context of COVID, these are the things that are being put in place. So from my experience, given all this that's going on, it's been an unprecedented amount of positive work. I do not recall seeing superintendent new contracts based on student outcomes. And I have been, if you've been watching for a long time, bringing out our post-secondary completion rates and showing you how our kids and students with disabilities have not been moving through our district. But that was never brought up as an issue in relation to student contract or to the superintendent contracts. I don't know that that's the primary. I think this process that's going in is not only a positive trajectory, but it's something that we've got to invest in. And we've got to, but we basically need to tell our teachers, as well as our leadership, that we want a stable structure. And it starts by hiring our superintendent and keeping our superintendent here. One last thing, I apologize if I'm over time because I'm not even keeping track. I apologize for that. We just lost seventy superintendents in New Hampshire. There are plenty of job openings for a superintendent. And if you think we're going to be getting just a better one, given our reputation, I think what we need to do is invest in the great change that's happened, the great opportunities that are going on, and, and just keep moving forward. So I think that's, that's the plan. I hope you, I hope you do give the five-year extension. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Reece Stalberg.
Hi, good evening. I'm Reece Stalberg, and I live on Fieldbrook Road. And I just want to echo everything that Scott Solberg said and commend you for extending Dr. Bucky's contract for two years, if that's how you so vote. I really wanted to speak to my role as, on the Planning for Success Initiative. We were asked, as a parent representative, we were asked to go onto the community to speak to as many people as possible for, to gauge what people's feelings were with the district going forward and looking backwards. And one of the major issues that came up for almost every single person I talked to, whether it was a parent, a community member, or a staff member, was the dire need for stable leadership. And I really want to say that I feel that extending Dr. Bucky's contract for two years longer is a major step in the right direction based on what the community feedback I received was looking for from the school department. And that the plan taking shape for Marblehead Public Schools and the work that's being done and planning for success is something that I think Marblehead is going to be very proud of. And I have full confidence in Dr.'s ability, Dr. Bucky's ability to lead the district on this forward path. So, thank you.
Thank you, Reece. Melissa Kaplowich.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Melissa Kaplowich, Camille Tarris. I also wrote out a statement, and it is no surprise that Scott Solberg and I are in the same field and do the exact same work. So I'm going to sort of not repeat what he has said. But before I start, I do, would like to say that I really do appreciate the voice of the speakers who spoke early on. I think it's really important to have different perspectives in this community and to be respectful of all perspectives. And I don't want to undermine any of the voices that, that came before me because I think that they're, they're valid and important points. I've been a parent and a volunteer in this district since two thousand and five. It's been a long time. Over that time of experience for evolving door of superintendents and building administrators, I've seen the direct effects of ineffective leadership on my children, on district leaders, teachers in this community. And frankly, I have just about given up on our efforts as a district to move towards academic excellence. Bill McCalldoff restored my faith. And when he was in district, I, like many of the people on this meeting, took great interest in the superintendent search process and who our new superintendent would be. Just over a year ago, Dr. Bucky began his tenure as a superintendent in our community after an in-depth and rigorous process. Historically, a newly hired superintendent starts the preparation for this position by creating an entry plan, meeting with stakeholders, examining schedules, looking at staffing, looking at budgets, looking at existing policy, and above all, perhaps does a tremendous amount of listening. That's what we would expect in a regular year. When this community hired Dr. Bucky five months prior to the start of his contract, nobody could have imagined that the series of scenarios that took place would be before us. None of us could have planned for it. This past year has brought a series of scenarios, scenarios that not even the most seasoned superintendent could have had a plan before hidden in their back pocket. Almost daily, every administrator across this country faced a series of unfamiliar territory with a landscape that changed again and again and again. The usual entry plan that this community may have expected, which would have included reasonably set goals and the typical to-do list, went out the door and was replaced with a series of safety initiatives, a series of academic standards under a series of changing strategies daily, and welcoming and reassuring our students and our teachers and our families that our students would be okay given all of the unknowns. The job of a district superintendent is challenging on the best day under the most ideal circumstances. All superintendents are called upon to manage daunting challenges. In Marblehead, even without a pandemic, this continues to be more challenging compared to other districts. As Scott mentioned, as many of you know, maybe you won't say it, we have a reputation of being a difficult district with difficult parents, underpaid teachers, stagnation, and the inability, inability to get to the next level of excellence. When Dr. Bucky began his tenure here, our district had faced great turmoil, which left scores of unhappy parents, unhappy staff, scared children, and a sour taste of discontent and distrust amongst many of us. We have just started to rebuild. This year, superintendents across the country, not just in our little microcosm of Marblehead, have had to react to rapid, ever-evolving, uncertain changes almost daily and make decisions about matters that not only would occur in the first year of a new job, but with regard to curveballs that kept coming and coming and coming. Throughout the year, members of this community were scared. They were angry. They were disappointed. And yet, at the same time, there were members of this community who were happy and grateful for all of the work and planning that went into creating the best possible environment under the worst possible set of circumstances. Not all of us have to agree all the time. How can we? We are all unique, and all of our children are unique learners. Not everyone will be happy, myself included. And when I'm not, people hear it. However, most people recognize that this past year was an aberration unlike any other time in recent history. And most people are positive about the future direction of our district. Despite all we've faced this past year, just a few weeks ago to school committee meeting, I watched the presentations given by Nan Murphy and Dr. Oxford, where they updated the community on what they have done and all that they've accomplished despite the challenges of the pandemic. I was in awe. I actually thought it was the best school committee I've ever attended. The changes in our curriculum, staffing, approaches to teaching and inclusion demonstrated excellence that I have not seen in this district since I began in two thousand and five. All that was done under the pandemic, under the tenure of a brand-new superintendent in his first year in our district and his first year as a superintendent. Dr. Bucky, you have faced more than your share of challenges this year. Through it all, you have answered your critics, perhaps not always with the answers that pleased all, but with the willingness to listen, be responsive, be open, be proactive in understanding how you can improve not just the district, but how you can improve as a superintendent. Through all of the challenges this year, you've shown to be a strong communicator. You planned, you planned again, you planned again, and you planned with A, B, C, and D so that we could be ready with each set of ever-evolving changes that were directed by D E S I. You presented a calm, encouraging manner. You work with stakeholders across the community. You mended damages that were years in the making and hard to fix. You acknowledged that there were bumps along the way, and you have been self-reflective in what you might do differently. And perhaps more, most impressively, you continue to produce impactful and much-needed change, including academic, cultural, and social betterment for our children. Amazingly, you are not hindered by the challenges of the pandemic or the critics that, or, or your critics. You continue to make paradigm shifts, introduce positive change across the district, and find new ways to measure and advance district goals. You have empowered administrative teams to be leaders within their own buildings, delegating responsibilities that should have been held by our building principals, yet haven't been for years by calling upon yet haven't been for years, by calling upon their strengths as you rebuild the foundation of this district. Throughout this year, I had many worries, but I never worried about a contract renewal. I worried that you would leave us. And I shared this worry with you on many occasions. I've been an educator for 29 years. I've worked closely with district superintendents in this state and retired superintendents who now work with the National Superintendents Association. I know all too well about the superintendent shortage nationwide. I don't just read the globe. I interact with superintendents across the country who are just simply opting out. We are seeing instability in districts across the state and across the United States of America, for that matter. The success of this district and our ability to move forward depends on creating a plan for success and a portrait of a graduate. And it's dependent upon having a leader that will see it through with a clear, consistent vision. We need to be productive. We need to push forward. We need to acknowledge the process that, the progress that has made over this year. And we need to acknowledge the job that our leadership team has done over this year. If people on this call have not watched the presentation by Nan Murphy and Eric Oxford, I really recommend watching, watching it. See what was actually been done. I would like this committee to remember that there are many, many, many people who recognize the work that has been done this past year under the most horrific of circumstances. I want to say thank you to Dr. Bucky and his entire team, not only for what you have accomplished, but what you've endured. Criticism comes with this job. There's something to be learned from listening. There's something to be learned from hearing. And there's something to be learned for making corresponding changes. Tonight, I'd like you and this school committee to know that there is extreme gratitude for what has been done. To the members of the school committee, the mere fact that Dr. Bucky has chosen to commit to this district is a testament to his dedication to our community and a return to maintaining a stale, well-led district with the quality leadership who seeks academic excellence for all learners. During a climate when superintendents are opting to lead their districts before their contracts are up, we need to understand that the demonstrated commitment Dr. Bucky has made in moving this district forward is something that we've lacked for years. That progress is not getting lost in the majority of this community. It is up to the members of this school district to move this community forward. The recent election has shown you what the voters in this town are expecting. In the Planning Success meetings that I've been part of, in the school advisory committing meetings I've been part of, I repeatedly hear parents addressing the need for stable leadership. We need to move forward. We need to allow the superintendent that we hired last year to continue doing the job that we expected. Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. If everyone could try to keep their, their comments around three minutes, that would be wonderful. Next up is Paul's iPhone.
Thank you, Sarah. Paul Baker, 79, Overlook. I don't know really how I follow Melissa. Congratulations, Melissa. You just dropped the mic moment. From my point of view and for what it's worth, there just seems to appear to be a number of residents in the school district that's hell-bent on undermining the present school committee and superintendent. It appears that some individuals are almost acting as a vicious school, school committee. Members are poking and prompting from behind the curtains to stir unrest, disquiet, and generally undermine the work of our school district. To what end? I just don't know. What is to be gained by all this negativity? Revenge? Retribution? Who knows? Do any of, do any or all of these individuals really want Dr. Bucky to resign and not stay with us? Do they really want the entire school committee to resign? After all the flak that you have all endured over the last year, I wouldn't blame any one of you if you did. Let's remember, only one resident stepped forward to challenge Meghan Taylor in June elections, and that person was unsuccessful, period. She lost. There were no hidden agendas, no nefarious, unscrupulous backroom deals. Instead, there were just residents willing to stand out in the rain, hold signs, knock on doors, and encourage others to do their civic duty and vote. And yes, I can't vote. I'm not a citizen. But I'm a resident and I'm able to, to have an opinion on what goes on in this school that affects my children, and I will continue to do that. Next June, residents will have the opportunity to step up and challenge, should they wish to run for reelection, David Harris and/or Sarah Fox. For the next 11 months, our town has five elected school committee members sat before us, the five that we elected. Hopefully, we'll also have Dr. Bucky for four more years. We, as residents of this town, can choose to work with him or against him. I say that after all of the ridiculous accusations, outlandish conspiracy theories, and general hogwash that's been directed at his administration, we're just darn lucky that he wants to stay here at all, for one year, let alone four. To reiterate, I wouldn't blame him one little bit if he chose not to stay. Let's be perfectly honest with ourselves. If Dr. Bucky is driven out of our school district by this continuous tsunami of negativity, the superintendency of our town will be viewed as a poisoned chalice, not this wonderful holy ground that some mistakenly seem to think it is. As Scott and Melissa and Reece have already stated, our record, our re-superintendence, is not particularly stellar. In fact, it's bloody appalling. Quite frankly, our school district cannot afford to lose Dr. Bucky. If we were to lose him, who the heck do all of these naysayers think we could attract to our negative little bubble of a peninsula? Stop kidding yourselves. Wake up. We're Marblehead and look at us. People talk about us, and it's not positive. This is our lot. Get on board. Support the folks that were elected, the superintendent they hired, and the administration and teachers that work with him, not for him, with him. And then take a pause. This is the funny part, if you want to laugh. Ask yourself what would Bing Crosby do. He'd bloody well accentuate the positive and eliminate all of this toxic negativity. That's what he'd do. Dr. Bucky, thank you, and thank you to your team, and thank you for sticking with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. John DiPiano.
Oops, sorry about that. I was fumbling with my, my mute button. Hi, John DiPiano, Six Triggo Road. I wasn't sure I was going to comment, but I was listening to the comments that were being made and I decided that I would. I'll try to keep my comments brief. I don't, I don't subscribe to the view that Marblehead's a poisoned chalice. I don't subscribe to the view that people here have an ulterior motive to undermine the school. I don't think people have to be opposite or at home in, in terms of addressing differing points of view. And that's a larger conversation that maybe extends beyond this, this, this meeting. I also don't subscribe to the view that parents in this, in this town who are engaged and to be difficult. I also don't subscribe to the view that it's the school committee's exclusive job to support the superintendent. The school committee is not elected by the superintendent. The school, the school committee members are elected by the membership of this town. You have a dual ju, a job. You have to answer to both your constituents, who are the people who put you in those positions, and to do the best you can with the administration. That administration needs to be able to support and communicate with the parents in a way that prior superintendents have not been able to do. That may or may not be a direct consequence of who the schools committees have placed in the superintendent's role in the past. And so I don't believe for a minute that extending a contract, which is not the usual and customary practice, to five years is going to address the concerns that people have said it's going to address. There needs to be a change in terms of maybe the communication between the committee and the, and the town and the superintendent and the people in the town. Better communications and, and more, and more cooperative communication, perhaps. Not indicating that because someone has a contrary view that Marblehead has a reputation of, of being difficult and, and is going to be a poisoned chalice. That's hyperbolic and charged language. It's not helpful. And I mean that with all due respect. And in addition to that, as an attorney and as a father of a child in the school, in the school community, I am concerned that the school, as Ms. Tedford indicated when she spoke earlier, is giving up its leverage with respect to getting the best and the brightest superintendents by squelching competition for the position, by placing themselves in a, in a position where they've now extended the contract beyond a warranted period of time. You also strap any future school committee members, who may replace the six-day school committee members, if they are not voted in, with that contract. You've made that decision for future school committees. That's not, that's not appropriate. I also want to say that, that while, while this existing superintendent may have been determined to be proficient during a pandemic, that we don't have the data points of this superintendent running the school district in an in-person format, which is the usual and customary format in which he will be participating. So I may understand some of the support for Dr. Bucky in extending the contract to five years if we were already at the end of his three-year term. I don't understand it at the end of his one-year term. And so I'd urge the members of this committee to take these comments and the comments that you've heard, not because that anyone's trying to undermine anyone, not because anyone has a personal vendetta or an agenda with respect to Dr. Bucky, but because of the fact that a future school committee should not be saddled with a five-year contract, which is not the usual customary manner of doing business. It shouldn't, and, and we should not be strapped and, and lose leverage in terms of being able to have competition for this job in the future, regardless of whether, or whether or not the motivations for doing that are well-placed. It's not a good idea. But thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, John. Peter McCarriston.
Hi, it's actually Mary McCarriston. I'm not going to spend 15 minutes speaking about how I believe we should vote for five years. We need stability. Yes, we are a laughing stock. I grew up in Lynn, and people tell me all the time, you know, you're over there. You know, you're not any better than any of the other surrounding towns. And I think Dr. Bucky is bringing stability. And as a parent, and this isn't my first time. I have ages from eight to 39. So I'm going through it all over again. And I feel confident that we should keep him for five years because I think he works very hard and he wants to invest in this town. So I agree with Reece and Scott and Melissa. I think as a parent, I would want the full five years so I know that we're going to have somebody there for us and working hard. He's young. He's not going to retire anytime soon. And I think we should keep him here in town and try to turn our views that other towns, surrounding towns have on us to be something more positive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Cindy Tower Lowen.
Hi, Cindy Tower Lowen, 12 Trinity Road. I will make this brief. When I saw the chatter on Facebook today, it was like, oh, here we go again. And many people know how I feel regarding the school committee and Dr. Bucky as well. But many people don't know what I feel about the Facebook and the chatter. And, you know, looking at it, it's like, okay, so what am I going to do with this? And I will tell you that my initial reaction in terms of the contract piece, just personally, was, okay, we did this with Mary Ann Perry. Why are we doing this now? And then when I'm thinking about it, and I started reaching out in terms of how I do my homework, I have to say that, you know, John Bucky is not Mary Ann Perry, and thank the Lord for that. And yet, we are still in this mistrust vicious cycle because of what that administration did with our school system. And, and so, yeah, there is fear about, okay, is this going to get us in the same place that we were with that administration? And when we wanted to not have that person there anymore, what happened? The school committee had an executive meeting and honestly, it had to be, you know, three to two or four to one or whatever in terms of how that all came down. Okay? And I wasn't in that meeting, and I'm not privy to that. But that is the fear of where we are. And yet, I am reminded time and time again that John Bucky is not who we had. And what I've seen him do in the last year under COVID, under being a freshman superintendent, under all kinds of things, including Marblehead, and including the mess that was created by the former school committee members as well as the administration, okay? I think John has done very, very well. Now, is he perfect? No. Is anybody perfect? No. We all know that. And so in terms of what I, would I agree to an extension, given the circumstances as what we're looking at and the fact that this man is invested and he's already proven himself? Maybe he hasn't proven himself in the ways that some people have. I would say yes, okay? And I would like to think that the school committee, once again, as I said in the last, at the last meeting, will come together. That does not mean you guys have to agree. But you know what? The chatter on the Facebook and all that other crap that happens, and yes, it includes one of the school committee members currently, who, who is on there and then says, oh, everybody, you can call me and whatever else. Well, you know what? To be honest, I think we all know we can call anybody on the school committee. We don't need to see that on the Facebook. And that just brings more stuff that comes out. And then people are divisive and everything else, and oh, what are they doing now? Oh, backdoor this, backdoor that. You know what? I'm really tired of it. And I really do wish that you guys would just come together and step up and work together instead of working the way that it has been this last year. And I hope that John Bucky stays here and wants to stay here because damn it all, as Paul said, I wouldn't be surprised if he walked out. Why would anybody want to be here? Are we so great? Everybody thinks we're so great here? Think again, okay? And I will share one thing. The church that I was a member of and have been, we had a reputation too. And that reputation was we would chew out our ministers and spit them out. And you know what? We paid dearly for that, okay? And so don't think it can't happen here with superintendents because it certainly can. And so I commend John for being here. I commend the work that the school committee. And I trust in having elected you guys in terms of where you go with this and just be well and stay safe.
Thank you, Cindy. And our final public comment will be from Kazzy Kendall.
Hello, thank you for hearing me tonight. So I've listened to all of the comments tonight. And what I'm hearing is two sides of the same fear. There seems to be one side that is afraid that if we extend a contract for an additional two years, we might lock ourselves into an unfavorable position. There's another side of the fear that says if we don't do that, we might lose our superintendent. Both of these, as I say, are based in fear. But the reality is that we have a contract. We have a contract with an additional, sorry, that already has another two years on it to run. So what I would suggest is waiting one more year. Dr. Bucky is not go, or I hope he doesn't leave mid-contract. But by waiting one more year, and as others have said, evaluating and seeing what this looks like in hopefully a typical year, we would have a better sense of what could happen. And I just think that the people who are afraid that this would make us unstable, I think again, that's based in fear. I'm not afraid of waiting one more year to make this decision. And I don't think the school community should be afraid of that either. Thank you.
Thank you, Kazzy. Kristin Pratt, you can speak, but I will probably wrap us up after that. I feel a little bit like Gary Speach right now. I think we've heard a lot and, and that we're sort of hearing people say things over and over at this point. So I appreciate all the public comment. And Kristin Pratt, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I'm going to be short. I agree with Kazzy. Honestly, I started getting questions about
Honestly, I started getting questions about this a couple of days ago from people and I felt, I felt confused because I didn't feel prepared to even give a opinion. I was surprised it wasn't mentioned by the school committee in an earlier meeting. You know, it feels like a very big decision and it feels like this is something that is quite maybe emotional and fear-based. And I don't even really have a strong opinion about should we or shouldn't we? My question is why now? Like, and, and why are we, like from a, in my professional experience, it would be very unorthodox to do something like this at this stage of the contract if we weren't really concerned that there was a huge risk that we were trying to mitigate. So I guess I'm asking like, is there a risk that we don't know about? Could you explain it? Do we think John Bucky is going to leave? I mean, I certainly hope Dr. Bucky doesn't leave during his contract. It just seems, it seems a little bit rushed and it seems a little bit emotionally driven, driven. And I guess just like with my business head on, I just feel a little bit impudent. And I'm trying to understand what's going on that's prompting us to, to kind of rush this right now. And I, I hadn't thought about it, but when, when John DiPiano commented, I think his comment, I don't know, carried weight with me. Maybe that's why the cycles are typically three years. But you know, that I would, I would ask the school committee, you know, take it seriously that you're now making a decision for school committees that have been not elected yet. But I didn't see anything in the document when I read it that helps protect us in terms of him staying longer. It, it, yeah, that's, I don't know. I was really confused when I read the document because I was trying to understand what are we trying to achieve? Why now? And it felt like something was missing. And that, so maybe hopefully we'll get some clarity in your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. All right, that will move us on to our next agenda item, which is first, the Director of Finance contract. Everyone had this contract in their Dropbox. It was out for the community to see as well. So I will ask for a motion that the school committee appoint Michelle Crusta as Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations and approve the contract for such appointment.
So moved.
David moved. Emily, second. All right. Does anybody have anything they would like to comment on? Sarah Fox.
First, there's a couple of things in there I think we just need to amend. Under the, the holidays, we didn't have in there Juneteenth, which is now obviously both state and federal holiday. So we should add that to any contracts, obviously that, that are made up moving forward. And just add that, that piece in there. I think it's just a, a small piece. And I actually would motion to amend this to a three-year contract. Typically, three years is the term that we see. And when we see a one-year contract, it's my understanding, it's typically for an interim position, which this wasn't titled. So I, I would, I would motion to change this to a three-year contract to be in line with what, what is customary.
So I'll speak to that. I am amenable to that motion, assuming we can make it without having to go back into executive session. I had a lengthy conversation with legal John Foskett yesterday regarding whether or not it should be a one-year versus a three-year. He did not have any significant concerns either way. In the end, because we did not talk about it as a three-year in, in the executive session, we decided to leave it as a one-year over concern that a three-year would, would cut, would raise concerns over the executive session piece and negotiations. So what he told me was that if we leave it as a one-year, the only thing that's going to go on because it is a contract that is worked out between John and the finance director, the superintendent and the finance director. And then it's just a simple school committee approval on it, that they could do that and then come back to us, you know, at some point later this year with an additional, with the additional or a new three-year contract.
Okay. Do we have, so is anybody prepared to second my motion or no?
So the motion on, the motion on the floor is to accept the contract as presented.
Yes, and I amended, I amended the motion to make it a three-year contract, which reflects the typical time spans. So I didn't know if there was a second on that amendment.
If I'm hearing correctly though, Sarah, you said we'd have to go back into executive session to confirm that, right?
Not necessarily. John was unsure and, and we felt as though because we had not done it in executive session, that we were going to default to not putting it as a three-year in, over concern that we would have to table it tonight and go back into executive session. So, you know, and Dr. Bucky, I know you were part of that conversation for a time. So feel free to jump in here.
I think we can amend it.
You can. I actually had that conversation. With Michelle Crusta about the one or the three-year contract. And because John was indicating that it had not been discussed in executive session, she was not concerned about the duration of the contract.
My understanding is that we don't even have to do negotiations in executive session. It's an option, but we can always, if both parties are amicable, do it in a public session. There's never anything keeping us from that unless one party chooses. So if no one objects, then we can move forward with the amended motion if it's seconded.
So Sarah has made it a motion to amend to the, to make it a three-year contract instead of a one. Does anybody want to second that?
I'll second.
Okay. So Emily, second. Let me just write. Okay. So Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong. We need to vote the amendment first.
Yes, amendments are always voted prior. And if you only vote the main motion if the amendment fails.
Sorry, say that again.
So you vote the amendment first. And if it passes, then that's the end of it. If it fails, then you vote the original motion only upon failure of the amended motion. Does that make sense?
Yes. So I have a motion to appoint Michelle Crusta as Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations and approve the contract for such appointment, making it a three-year contract.
And giving her Juneteenth off as it pertains to federal law.
And giving her a Juneteenth off.
Is, is it weird to do this without even talking to Michelle?
John has talked with her.
And she's fine with this.
She is, and this is the contract approved by legal, so.
But for the three-year, I guess is my point. You've talked to her about the three.
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything that they want to add? I'll just add that this is a, this is a huge step for the district and a really positive move, in my opinion.
Yeah, if Michelle's willing to stick with us for three years, let's take it. She's amazing.
Right, and I and I'd also like to recognize Michelle as, as well. I mean, Michelle was the first hire. Bill McCallum brought Michelle on board and Sarah and I were fortunate enough to be the subcommittee involved in that search. And, you know, we always knew Michelle had some additional skillsets in her back pocket and we were hoping that we'd be able to take advantage of those, Michelle. So, you know, we're glad to be adding some of those duties into your position and, you know, making those, making those changes tonight. And I think it goes without saying, you know, a lot of people don't even know that Michelle filled in for the town when there was some gaps with, in between Allison Nado leaving. And really helped out Jason in the throes of, you know, pandemic and, and budget planning. So there was, you know, relying on her experience there as a, as a town finance professional as well in, in past years. So we really appreciate all the work that was done there. And also if we, you know, we know the foundation of the budget was something that we've been working on for two years. And the ease with which we were able to, well, I know it wasn't easy, Michelle, but I should say, the documents that you presented, the clarity, the continuity of how we were able to follow along with throughout our budget meetings with, that Megan and I were involved in and many others participated in, provided a lot of clarity and, and understanding. And, you know, we all received some really good news. You also managed close to $2 million of COVID funds that, you know, all kinds of different areas, the district needed funding, different resources, figuring out what funds could be used, you know, for the different types of resources that we acquired during the pandemic, whether it was laptops for teachers or cleaning supplies or the outdoor tents. Another unprecedented area of, of finance that, you know, normally wouldn't, wouldn't be kept over here, but you, you really did a great job with that. Additionally, another job that most finance directors don't have is, you know, a new school project. There aren't too many of them going on in the state of Massachusetts. I think there's only about 64 active projects. And you've just done an outstanding job processing the invoices on a monthly basis with Left Field and Dan McSweeney and making sure that our vendors are getting paid timely, making sure that Marblehead's getting reimbursed from the MSBA on a timely basis. So thank you very much for that. And I'm glad to have you on board for another three years and have you stepping up. So thank you very much, Michelle.
Thanks, David. Emily, did you want to say something or are you, all set? All right. So we've got a motion and it is seconded, so I will call for a roll call vote. Sarah Gold, yes. David Harris?
Yes.
Yes.
Emily Barron?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
And Sarah Fox?
Yes.
All right. So that motion passes five to zero. In addition to that motion, can I please get a motion that the school committee designate the chair to execute this on behalf of, execute on its behalf, the contract for the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations?
So moved.
Sarah moved.
I'll second.
Megan, second. All right. Sarah Gold, yes. David Harris?
Yes.
Emily Barron?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
And Sarah Fox?
Yes.
Okay. That passes five to zero. All right. That takes us on to the superintendent contracts. Just going to mute David. Can I please get a motion that the school committee enter into an amended employment agreement with Dr. John Bucky as superintendent, extending the term of employment to and including June 30th, 2025, and granting a 2% COLA increase in annual salary for the 2021, 2022 school year?
So moved.
Megan moved.
Second.
David, second. All right. Does anybody have any comments on that? David?
Thank you. And I would like to also thank the many people that came tonight to have their comments here, heard, pardon me, and as well as the emails. I haven't had a chance to read everybody's email. Some of them came in late today, but I'll be sure to catch up on those. So thank you there for everybody's input. In May of this year, Dr. Bucky and the school committee began the process of completing the highly prescriptive end-of-year evaluation as required by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. But in reality, his evaluation started in the fall of 2019, when a superintendent screening committee of 13 people was created. This committee included town citizens, parents, teachers, administrative staff, our town administrator, the chair of our Board of Selectmen, and school committee members, Jen Schaffner and Sarah Fox. Over the next several weeks, the committee worked to review 20 applicants, conducted 10 interviews, and in the end, recommended two finalists for consideration. In January, each finalist visited the district with a comprehensive itinerary, ended up meeting and greeting with the community, and finally, a public interview with the school committee. We also solicited feedback and received over 100 written feedback forms. Additionally, the school committee received numerous emails from citizens and staff offering their thoughts on each candidate and each school committee member conducted reference checks on the process. Our successful candidate profile recommended that preference be given to an educational leader who demonstrates a significant depth of skill and knowledge in two key areas, collaborative, inclusive leadership, and strategic systemic leadership. One candidate clearly stood out in that process. From screening interviews to feedback and reference checks by presenting excellent communication skills, examples of building positive and effective leadership with community members, teachers and students, and clearly understands and expects multiple viewpoints and perspectives. Dr. Bucky was the unanimous choice of the school committee. He exhibited a good understanding of the complex, complex interaction of the multiple facets of the district and understands, most importantly, as a superintendent, he will be accountable and responsible for ensuring that all are well-managed. Dr. Bucky offered clear, concise responses to each question we asked and backed up his statements with examples of experience. He clearly indicated a sincere interest in developing relationships with school staff, students and community members. The statements I made nearly 15 months ago at a public meeting to hire our next leader still hold true tonight. And as I said, Dr. Bucky is not only passionate about education, he's an experienced creative problem solver and has a, and the leader that this district needs to move us forward and complement our solid staff of educators and administrators. I feel that Dr. Bucky is the leader we're looking for and I have full confidence in his ability to lead the district. As one feedback forum stated, and I quote, "John is fresh, full of energy, poised, confident, completely comfortable with public speaking, and has a great sense of humor. In short, he has charisma. It is without hesitation that I recommend to this committee, we move him forward as the next superintendent of Marblehead Schools." So now we fast forward to tonight. I'd like to read a few of my comments from my summative evaluation of his first year, year of performance. That is public record, but I'm not too sure too many people have had a chance to read them. The global pandemic of COVID-19 has had a significant impact on the entire nation and education was not spared in 2020 and 2021. Every aspect of Dr. Bucky's first year summative report speaks to the challenges we faced as a district and the leadership role he played in student learning, management and operations, family and community engagement, and the commitment to a high standard within the professional culture. Dr. Bucky started his transition by working closely with Superintendent Bill McCallum to understand some of the short-term and long-term needs of our district. He also embraced the project, the progress made by Bill and the new Director of Finance, Michelle Crusta, on our budget shortcomings from prior years, as well as the move to a more stable environment in FY21. Next, he hired Assistant Superintendent Nan Murphy, followed by the recommendation of Eric Oxford as Permanent Director of Student Services. Dr. Bucky has also been actively engaged in the Massachusetts Association of School Committees' New Superintendents Induction Program, say that fast five times, where he worked with his coach, retired Superintendent Chris McGrath, on all aspects of his position, including the daily challenges of COVID planning and pivoting. Another key aspect this year was his detailed entry plan that focused on listening and learning, being reflective about history, culture, needs and concerns of the Marblehead community. At a presentation in late April to the committee, it was clear that despite the ongoing challenges presented by COVID, Dr. Bucky had made significant progress in moving his plan forward and the district forward. He has also recently rolled out the Planning for Success Initiative as the next step to move our district forward. Throughout the year, Dr. Bucky's leadership has been focused on the safety and security of our students and staff. While sometimes unpopular and challenging for students and families and staff, the day-to-day pivoting that was brought on by COVID was always based on, and I quote, "Developing and executing plans, procedures, routines." Was always based on, and I quote, developing and executing plans, procedures, routines. Operational systems to address the full range of safety, health and the emotional and social needs. The reopening plan and collaborative work with the reopening committee and nine subcommittees was thoughtful and purposeful. And ultimately led us to a full reopening of our schools safely. Dr. Bucky has also taken an active role in the construction of the new Lucretia and Joseph Brown School. Which is also a unique aspect of his first year. He's been fully engaged with the team, visiting the site on a regular basis. And helping to ensure that the educational design is being implemented. Sean Satafield was confirmed as principal. As the project nears completion, Dr. Bucky is overseeing the internal logistics. Along with his team that will allow for a successful transition to this new school in the fall. In summary, Dr. Bucky's overall performance this year has been proficient, if not exemplary in many areas. And highlighted by many exemplary achievements, excuse me. In his self in his self-assessment, he identified his strengths and weaknesses, provided a thoughtful photo retrospective. And offers the foundation for leading the district out of the pandemic and back to building, quote, a culture of high standards. I'm confident he'll continue to be communicative and open in his work with the school committee and be highly. Highly visible and accessible to staff, parents and the community. Additionally, throughout this challenging year, Dr. Bucky has maintained a sense of humor, been active in the community. Remained open, honest and transparent in communications and built relationships that have created trust in his leadership. I look forward to working with you, Dr. Bucky, his leadership team and the staff in the coming year to support the educational needs of our students. In closing, as I said once before, it is without hesitation that I recommend that this committee vote yes. This time to approve the contract as presented tonight with an extension through twenty twenty-five and a two percent raise for this fiscal year. I believe that an additional two years to Doc- Dr. Bucky's contract will allow this district to move forward with confidence, consistency. And stability. And it will demonstrate to Dr. Bucky how we truly value him as the leader of our schools. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Uh does anybody else have anything they would like to say? Uh Sarah Fox?
Hi, so I just want to start off by being really clear because I'm I'm not sure by some of the comments if the public understands this or. If even our full board understands this. This is not a review of Dr. Bucky. We did our review of Dr. Bucky. Um we closed that out with a vote. Um this is not for, this is not a re- a performance review in any way, shape or form. Of of Dr. Bucky and I think it's unfair um to con- complete the two. Um so we're in the business of um educating students. Essentially, you know, it's. Not, we're not a business, but that's that's what we do. And we should be evaluating the success of our leadership based on student achievement. This past year has shown our students to have deep emotional needs and learning gaps, and that is in no way, shape or form something Dr. Bucky created. I am not saying it is. I am saying it exists. Better or worse, it exists because we were in a pandemic. Um and so I think for me, someone who is extremely data-driven, it's very hard. To say we don't have data points. It that in a way, it's unfair to Dr. Bucky because we don't have those data points. He wasn't given an opportunity. Um no one in in the country, in the world was given that opportunity because of the circumstances of the pandemic. Um and this by is by no means his fault. However, I I do think that typically a decision of this would like this would be based on increasing student achievement. Um in fulfillment of our duties as good stewards um in our elected roles. I would, I would suggest that we want to give a full year in a. Quote-unquote typical normal setting of in-person school, full-time um to to allow Dr. Bucky to really show us. You know, what he can do in that normal setting and and I and I'm again, I am not saying I I think he's not going to show us great things. I'm saying we need the data points and I think that at the end of next year, he'll have been able to give us that those data points. Will be able to approach this from a business mindset versus a social emotional one. Um and we then can make that decision. So going with the data points, I, you know, while trying to kind of make. Wrap my head around this decision, I reached out. We have several organizations that we pay dues to or members of. We have MASC. We have NASDAQ, um Dr. Bucky is MASSS. Um and I thought these are the professionals. This is what they do. This they 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 have their pulse on what's going on. In districts across the state and across New England. Um I don't, I don't know what's going on in every district. I don't have time to look into that. I try to keep up with what's going on in area districts. So I use the resources available. And I reached out to two of those organizations and um the consultants just to see, you know, what is happening. Out there and you know, there is known to these consultants, one other. Um first-year superintendent where they extended the contract of the superintendent by a year, I believe. She basically saying like, we're evaluating you on a three-year term. We we it's hard because you didn't get to be evaluated in this first year. Um so we want to give you a full three years of scope, which as as I noted with Michelle's contract, three years is the typical scope. Um one of the other organizations said a five-year contract for a new superintendent is completely unprecedented. In the first year. Um and the reason they gave me, which was really interesting was. That is tying the feet of future school committees, that your your town's. Ability to decide where the what direction they want to go, as we all know, is through a vote. And if all of our tenures is three years. You know, doing anything that kind of carries us more than three years out is saying that if. That we are, we are making decisions for future school committees, future voters. So I would. I'm personally uncomfortable making any decision that carries beyond our tenure. Um you know, Megan was just re-elected. She's got the longest tenure. She is three years. Um then there's two of us that have two years and then two of us that are up next year. Um but my point is. I I went to the consultants that do this professionally, day in and day out, and this was the feedback I received from them. Um so I, you know, like everybody else, I I heard the public comment. I've read the emails. Um I'm not going to respond to to public comment because it's inappropriate, but contrary to what was stated, I didn't. I didn't weigh in in the way it was presented. Um I will be following up with that. Um but. You know, I I went to our our paid consultants. We pay memberships to these places and this is kind of what was given to me. So what I would suggest is that at this point, I am making a motion to amend the current motion. That we revisit this at the end of this year when Dr. Bucky has had a chance in a non-COVID crisis year. To flourish and shine and give us those data points. Of of increases in a student achievement. So then we we have fact-based and not social emotional base. Um reasons for moving moving forward in this. Um so my motion is to table this. Right now and revisit this mo- this vote at the end of the school year.
Does anybody want to second that motion? Okay, that motion does not have a second. Um Sarah, are you done um giving your comments?
At this time.
I had just asked one one clarifying question. So which, could you just clarify which consultants for the record you spoke with Sarah? Since you're quoting them.
Were the agencies that we are members of.
And those were?
Um well, we're members of NASDAQ, MASC, and I believe we're also a member of MASSS.
And which one of them used this term unprecedented? Was it NASDAQ or MASC?
Um I got information about the one superintendent who was a new superintendent. Being extended by one of them and I got information about um how a five-year. Superintendency to a first-year superintendent is unprecedented from the other.
And that that was NASDAQ that told you that?
Um David, I I I think it's inappropriate for me to state. To put any one of our consultants on the line. We all have to work together. Sorry, I have a little little person involving here. You know what I mean? Like people have to work together moving forward. I don't want this. I I I don't want this to become personal. Um. I'm assuming that.
I was just wondering.
Increase as well. I mean, did your homework, so.
Has done that, you know, so, okay.
Dedham, Dedham took a took a new superintendent who had a three-year contract and at the end of their second year. Offered the five-year extension, but it was at the end of their second year. Um and then there was one more that extended. Um the three-year contract by a year, I believe, this year.
Thanks.
Okay, does anybody else have any comments? Emily?
I know Boston extended their contract also. Um but that's not what I, just to add to the. Whatever. Okay, so we all know that this past year was not a great year, but. I think we all know that Dr. Bucky and his team and um we were able to do, and I know everyone. Said this, but I'm just going to say some of this stuff again. I'm sorry to repeat, but um we did get a lot of great work done. There was the curriculum work, our technology improvements, the special education work, all the DEI work we've done, the planning for success. And getting our kids back into the buildings before the end. Um before, you know, the state said and it's just, this work would not have been done. Um or would not have been as successful without Dr. Bucky's support, and I think we have to think about that. Um something that just recently happened and I'll just give you this as something that for me really shows. How important is for him to be here is that um in our Equity Network, we just did a PD with a renowned. Inclusion educator and she was so impressed that Dr. Bucky went to this to our town's Juneteenth celebration. And spoke and she said how lucky we are um to have a superintendent who is so committed to doing this work in our district. And what his vision for inclusion is for our district. And to me, that was such a great thing to hear from someone. Who is almost like, has been doing this work for years and has written books and she's like at the top of her. Game and for her to tell us how lucky it is that we get to have this, um that really meant a lot. And um we also, I know a lot of people have said this, but we need the consistency. We need stability for our students, our teachers and our admin. And I personally, I am doing this for them to be successful, to have that. And I'm going to quote. Um what Scott uh Solberg said, I thought this was amazing. We need to invest in the great change that is happening in our district. And I'll leave it at that.
Thanks, Emily. Uh Megan? And then I'll talk.
Okay, thanks. So um. A- again, thanks to everyone who's weighed in on this and taken the time to review the documents, to email us, call us and to speak at public comment. Because I think the community input is invaluable to this process. You know, when I looked at this, the question that I asked in consideration was. What is in the best interest of our students and our staff? And I know it's been said already, but it really is stability and consistency in leadership and. Being part of the Planning for Success process has really highlighted the impact. That that inconsistency has had on our district. So all the great things that we want to do, the curriculum, the technology, the budgeting. We cannot move forward on that without consistent and stable leadership here. So. Um you know, for me, that's really where we're at. We're just kicking off our planning for success. We're setting up. What we need to do over the next five years to get to where we want this district to be. Dr. Bucky is spearheading that initiative. We need to give him the opportunity to see that through. These are not changes that happen in one year. Some of them might not happen in three years. You know, these are long-term initiatives that we want to accomplish. And that's what we're setting ourselves up for by having ourselves in a position where we've got stable and consistent leadership. So you know, I know the question was asked, what does this bring to the town? That's what this brings to the town. Getting us the ability to reach the goals that we are setting for ourselves right now. Secondly, just to hit on the, you know, what has this been an appropriate year to actually make this decision? And yes, this year has been challenging for everybody, personally, professionally and in our schools. We're, you know, it's like that across the board, everywhere. But Dr. Bucky has not only shepherd us through that and got us to a point where our kids are back in school full-time. And learning in their classroom with their teachers. We didn't take any steps back. We took, he did. Methodical, thoughtful planning and preparation to get us through this year. And not only that, we have moved the dial forward on some of the things that we've been wanting to for so long, like I mentioned, curriculum. Technology, special education. As a member of the CPAC board for a number of years. What Eric presented in June were the things that I personally worked so hard to get this district to take on board. And he's doing it. He's making it happen. And that wouldn't have happened without Dr. Bucky empowering the leadership team. To do the work that is necessary to move us forward. So again, for me, it's about what is in the best interests of our students and our staff. And that is stable, consistent leadership to get us to achieve the goals that we want to achieve for this district.
Thanks, Megan. Um so I've I've obviously thought about this quite a bit as well. Um and my thoughts are not dissimilar to many of the thoughts that have been expressed this evening. Um I'm although I always run anxious, so there's always that pain within me, but I'm not fearful of the things that we've discussed. I I'm excited that we're here discussing the extension of the superintendent's contract. Um our community has indicated a desire. To have a school committee who is focused on calm and thoughtful leadership. Um we've worked hard to get to this place. And the people we have put into administrative positions have worked even harder. Um and this is an amazing team in this district and that's something to celebrate. Uh I've been on this committee since the chaos came to a head a few years ago. And I have been solely committed to moving this district forward in a steady way. For me, um an extension of the superin- contract superintendent's contract is a stabilizing choice. Um you know, I I'm absolutely of the mind that we cannot run another superintendent out of this town. Um we we, you know, as hard as it may be to hear, we do have a reputation um with with good pieces of our reputation, but we do have a reput- reputation. For treating our superintendents poorly and that's really not a legacy to be proud of and it certainly isn't one that I want to be attached to. Um we need to move away from the traumas of the past and trust our administrators again. Um and Marblehead really needs stability and consistency. Um I too reached out to some of the resources um to talk about this contract. And um you know, we aren't the only ones, as has been mentioned, that is adopting or is opting to extend a new superintendent's contract. Um and Dr. Bucky will not be the only superintendent in Massachusetts with a contract longer than three years. Um I actually disagree that this is tying the feet of future committees. Um I get where that thought comes from and I can and I can certainly understand it and and ponder it. I I but I. I just think I, every year in tech- technically, we have a new committee. And so if we think about that, then we shouldn't be making any. Any decisions passed that that had any more ramification than one year. And you know, we made a decision to hire Dr. Bucky. That maybe a different committee would have gone a different way. Um but but we hired him and he's with us today and and you know, and we're talking about what a fabulous. Job he's done. So um I think we're always making decisions that impact future committees. particularly when there's turnover in a committee. So, you know, I just, I push back a little bit on that. There's also ample reporting out there that superintendents have been leaving their careers at alarming rates. And so by agreeing to this contract, in my mind, Dr. Bucky is making a commitment to Marblehead in as much as we're making a commitment to Dr. Bucky. This contract doesn't have any different provisions that favor Dr. Bucky any more than the current one does. And I actually, one of the people I reached out to today was Bill McCaldiff, and he talked with me about that particular clause that I think some people have been very concerned about, about us being able to give Dr. Bucky the 100 days, and then there's a fee that we would pay him for, for leaving without cause. And that, he looks at that as a, as actually a protection to the, to Marblehead and to the school district, which I found fascinating, because I had always thought of it the other way as well. And he said, no, you know, I see that as, as preferring to, as deferring to Marblehead, because otherwise you have to show cause, and it is incredibly difficult to show cause. And so you are sort of with a superintendent for the duration of their term, whatever that contract, one, two, three, four, five, six years is. So I, I thought that was really worth noting from, from Bill. And the contract is pretty standard in all of these ways, and it is directly from our lawyers. So I think, you know, we have a superintendent sitting before us, and he's looking to buy a home in Marblehead because he's so committed to success here. And yes, this past year has been hopefully the most difficult year that any of us will ever experience. But I've seen Dr. Bucky lead with a steady hand. And I'm excited for the work that he started and supported with the administrators and staff throughout the district. And I really want to support him in that work and see it come to fruition. So that, that's kind of where my head is at, at this point. Sarah?
I also just want to clarify, we keep hearing people concerned about stability and that this contract offers stability. As you noted, there is the clause about, it's 180 days, actually, about 180 days' notice and then half your salary. If, if we were to sever ties. So it's about a year commitment. But what it, but this doesn't offer stability in that there's, Dr. Bucky can still leave at any time. And I, I don't think he's, I mean, we're all, I think we're, we're making the community very nervous that Dr. Bucky's on interviews, you know, wherever, and, and, and moving. That's not my understanding. But, but I just want to be clear that this, there's no provision from a contract law standpoint in this contract that, that offers more stability from, from any, from the superintendent choosing to leave of his own free will. There, there, there's no, there's no provision that he would pay a penalty or there's no provision that, that offers the stability. So if we want to offer a five-year contract, then that's the will of the committee, and we do it. But I just want to make a clarification that there is absolutely no legal standing in this contract that offers, quote unquote, the stability everyone is seeking of. I mean, we can't force Dr. Bucky to stay here for five years with this contract. The way it reads, he can leave just as easily as he could leave in a three-year contract. And I don't think he's going to. I'm not, I'm not saying that. And I want to keep saying, this is not a review. This is, we are talking about a contract and a business decision. This is not a review of, of, you know, we had a review. That was a few weeks ago. This is not the review. But this also does not offer any further stability. There are no additional provisions that prevent Dr. Bucky from leaving prior to five years if all of this comes to fruition. And Marblehead really is the, the rough place to work that we're hearing in this meeting it is.
I'll just clarify one thing quickly. In 12.2, it is 100 days and the half-year salary. For him to leave us, it's 180. All right. So we do have a motion, and everyone has had their chance to speak to it. So I will call for a roll call vote. Sarah Gold, yes. David Harris?
Yes.
Sarah Fox?
No.
Emily Barron?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
All right. That motion passes four to one. Can I get an additional motion that the school committee designate the chair to execute the amended employment agreement on its behalf?
So moved.
David moved.
Second.
Megan, second. Roll call vote. Sarah Gold, yes. David Harris?
Yes.
Sarah Fox?
Yes.
Emily Barron?
Yes.
And Megan Taylor?
Yes.
All right. That passes five to zero. I forgot to ask Michelle after we voted, but Dr. Bucky, I'll ask you right now, do you have any thoughts that you wanted to share with us this evening?
Sure. Thank you, Sarah. While this might be puzzling to some, I really do love my job as superintendent of Marblehead Public Schools, which I hope has been evident in my work this year. The fact that I live here and continue to look for a permanent home here should underscore my commitment to this community. Therefore, it is deeply gratifying to have the committee publicly support stability in the value and our continued collaboration in moving the district forward. Over the past year, our entire school district and the broader community accomplished a great deal under the most challenging set of circumstances of a global pandemic. We persevered, thanks to the incredible dedication and hard work of every student, parent, teacher, administrator, school committee member, and countless other employees in the schools and in our central office. I see tonight's vote as a mandate for me and my leadership team to go further and deeper into the vision, goals, budget development, and planning for success work we collaborated on and around. It supports our collective work to continue moving MPS forward in a positive direction. I do think there were exemplary things accomplished this year as a result of our ability to work together, to collaborate, and to communicate frequently, openly, honestly, and transparently. I am genuinely grateful for your support. I'm encouraged about the future of the Marblehead Public Schools. Our team is very strong. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Sarah, can we just, in his contract, make sure we add the Juneteenth as well?
Absolutely. Thanks, Sarah. Michelle, I know I did not ask you, but I will go back to you. I don't want to put you on the spot. I apologize. So, but if you wanted to say anything, feel free.
Thanks. Don't know how I'm going to follow up, John. But, no, I just wanted to say thank you very much, and, you know, the, the contract extension did not mean too much to me, because we'd be just negotiating the contract in another six months or so. But I do appreciate it, because I, I, I hope to stick around a very long time. And as John said, this is not an easy, or I don't know if he said that, but paraphrase. It's not an easy job, but I truly do love my job, and I love the team I work with. And just looking to make a difference in Marblehead, because it's a great place to be. So, thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. We're happy to have you. All right. So our final agenda item this evening is the FY22 user fees. You guys had a memo in the Dropbox regarding a 2.5% increase. I guess I will kick it off, and then John, I'll let you weigh in. A couple of years ago, as we were working with things, we sort of made a semi-commitment to not allowing our user fees to fall too far behind, as I think they had before. David, you may have been on the committee when they had that big jump, but I think that was pre-Megan and myself, though. But, so that we kind of kept up with these things. So this 2.5%, I think is reflective of, of other year, with the other years with the rate increases. And John, I'll turn it over to you at this point to fill in any of those other details.
Great. I worked with Greg Siglarsky and Michelle to look. Clearly, this year, we did not do an increase in our user fees, because we weren't sure what sports and activities would be able to run. So we looked at a two-and-a-half percent increase from the rates as they were established in 2019, 2020. I do think there is value in reviewing the structure we use for user fees. So I have asked Greg to look at that this year as maybe one of his goals, so that when we look to user fees moving forward, and perhaps there's even a part of the conversation as, do we need to have user fees? Because those were implemented many years ago in many districts, and fees for using the bus and taking classes. And so Marblehead is not unique in the fact that we have a user fee structure. But are we in line with the North Shore schools? And so I've asked Greg to take a look at that and see if we're going to restructure some of the possibilities that we could bring to the school committee for that. And I asked Greg to be here tonight if people had specific questions. But I do think it's a fairly straightforward proposal for the increase for next year.
Great. Thanks, Dr. Bucky. I will, before we get into any discussion, I will ask for a motion to approve a rate increase of 2.5% for the 2021, 2022 school year user fees.
So moved.
Megan moved.
Second.
Emily, second. All right. Does anybody have any comments on that? David?
So, thanks for this information, and I, just a couple of issues related to the fees in general. Michelle, since last year was sort of, you know, you were working through it, and we didn't have as many programs going. Is the responsibility, the responsibility for collecting the fees falls with the individual programs, right? But who is, who ultimately is checking the box to make sure the fees have been collected?
That is also the individual programs right now, but that, that's something that I do want to work with the programs and set up a better system, so we are making sure that those boxes are checked. So that will be part of our, part of our review of the programs and the fees. Absolutely. It's going to be a collective effort.
And as you have realigned the budget, the, a lot of, a lot of these user fees ultimately are supporting, as an example, for athletics, they might support referees and officials, right, and busing for some of the other clubs and, and programs, right? I mean, we're trying to steer, steer clear of paying salaries with, with user fees? Or do some, some salaries?
Yeah, most of the user fees currently are paying for a portion of the athletic coaching salaries. There is a very small piece that is used by the other groups, but primarily it is coaching salaries, just in terms of the coaching programs. And obviously, the coaching salaries would not be there if the programs were not running. So it's a direct correlation. It's not operating much.
Yeah. And I would just, I remember the day back, we were at the Village School, and we voted to restructure these fees, which I, you know, it hadn't been done in a long time, and, and I'm, I was not in favor of the fees. I will vote in favor of them this evening, because ultimately, you know, it's built into the structure and, and financial basis of, of our budget. But I would certainly encourage, if we do take the opportunity to benchmark against other districts, and, you know, as we, as we move forward, because, you know, for me, I think about it. You know, if someone's in the performing arts, isn't that really just part of, part of overall being in school? And, you know, we're asking, it's another, it's a sort of tax, or, you know, being on, being on the swim team or the tennis team, or, you know, whatever athletic teams we have. And all of the, all of the, the lessons that are learned by participating in, in those programs and just looking on down, you know, through the, through the list of programs that we have, I just hope maybe there's a way that we could ultimately find the opportunity to fund these in, in the coming year, if we are going to be looking at other funding needs for the district. I think this is one where we should be blind when it comes to, you know, who's playing what, when, and where, and just welcome everybody. So. But that's all I have on it.
Thanks, David. Sarah, you've got your hand up?
So like our kindergarten tuition or preschool tuition, moving forward, this is something I would like covered in an operating budget. I think, you know, for, a big part of a public education is being an active participant in a lot of these programs. And although I know we have, we have programs that help compensate for families that raise their hand and say, you know, I need some help and qualify, it's very hard to do that as a family, specifically in the town of Marblehead. And I think that, you know, if we truly want to be inclusive, getting rid of these fees is, is really an important step. You know, I know we have to pay our coaches stipends out of this, but I'd like to see things like that come into an operating budget instead. So just moving forward, I wanted to put that on the record. And then I have a couple clarifying questions. Where it says, first of all, senior girls only play football, is that just for the powder puff?
Yes.
So I, I always thought that was just, you know, a rite of, kind of like a senior celebration. I'm really taken back that we're actually charging them to do that. But where it says family maximum, is that only at the high school level? Or is your family maximum throughout the different grade levels?
That is for any extracurricular activity, which includes athletics. It would not be inclusive of kindergarten or preschool fees, but outside of those two.
That would be too good to be true in this house. No, I meant like, for instance, if you have someone at Village and someone at Fats and someone at the high school, do, does all of that work into that maximum family, or is it a maximum family per school?
Yes. No, it should be one per family across all schools.
The Wolvertons are getting their money for it. So yeah, that was, that was my other question. That was my other question. And then if we, where we have inter-scholastic sports versus intramural sports. So if a child does one intramural in the fall and one interscholastic in the winter, they wind up paying both those fees at the middle school level?
I will defer to Greg on that, if he happens to know the answer to that.
Yeah, they would, hi, everybody. They would just, they would just pay the balance of whatever's left over. So if you.
So it's not to exceed 214. It, it wouldn't be a combination of the two.
Correct. So if you just do it, you do an intramural sport in the fall, you do intramural ultimate frisbee, and then you play interscholastic basketball, you just pay the difference from between the intramural fee to the interscholastic.
Okay. So the max out-of-pocket at the middle school per student is 214.
It would be the same thing if you did, I'll use frisbee again, if you were a ultimate frisbee intramural, then you play, you have a son or daughter who plays high school sports as well. Again, you just pay that balance of whatever that fee is to get to the six, if we're going to 611 or 6002, or whatever that price is going to be that we're going to vote on tonight.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
No problem.
Megan?
So, I always thought the structure was very confusing and overly complicated. So I'm glad to hear you're going to review it. I think that's great. And if we can get to the point where we don't have this fee, I would absolutely support, you know, the work to, to get to that point. That said, for the vote tonight, when we, or when I came on board, you know, three years ago, I think you had just kind of gotten over the hump of a big, a big increase. And the whole point was to not put families in that situation again, where there'd be a big, a big increase and just do kind of the, you know, small incremental per year. So I think for this year, that makes sense.
Thanks. I mean, I agree with everything that's been said. I just second it all.
Yeah, I'm the same. I think we should get rid of them if we can. Because everyone, like David said, just should be able to do everything as part of their education package. So.
So I, I think as we move forward and kind of sooner, hopefully, rather than later, start to have some conversation if it's about what our budget priorities are. I think I, we just heard unanimously that one should be getting rid of these user fees, getting rid of all these parent taxes, and, and, and making it more inclusive.
Yes. All right. I will call for a vote. Sarah Gold, yes. Sarah Fox?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
Emily Barron?
Yes.
David Harris?
Yes.
All right. That passes five to zero. Thank you, Michelle and Greg, as well as John. Okay, so that is the end of our agenda this evening, so I will adjourn us at 7:49.
If I, if I can, real quick, Sarah, can we make a concerted effort during public comment to leave the obscenities out moving forward? I heard four tonight, and I think that we all could do better than that. It was, it was not by the committee. It was during public comment. But I would just, I would just appeal to the community to try to leave the obscenities out of public comment.
Absolutely. All right. We are adjourned at 7:49. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.